Yes, it's starting reading. It's like the planning board reading of October 22nd.
Who is clerking?
Comes to order at seven.
I'll clerk.
Just.
Okay, I can do it. Thank you.
Planner.
Yeah, let's kind of go up. Oh, here's go.
We just.
You have a question.
So ten seconds ago.
If you want, I'll open it to whether any questions about anything within the planner's report. I guess the biggest one was to get denied for the gap in funding for the extension of sewer and water. But there's opportunity within our existing grant contract to the state to potentially make that happen anyway. So we're town manager and I, the state have met to address that issue. We're still hoping to go out to bid for the solicitation of contractors to do the work to put the sewer and water in the ground.
Where's that? I'm sorry to read you before. Where's that?
It is on the bottom of the first page. So. Oh, it's on. I'm sorry. I didn't print it. It's, I'm just looking at it.
You just tell me what it is. You don't have to. I mean, gap the gathering.
Yeah, so it said the housing works grant formerly known as Mass Works grant. The town got $3.6 million for last year to extend the sewer and water down the governor's landing. I had put in a hurried application in June because we had got word that DOT was not matching our plans. And there was going to be a substantial length of that road town was going to be responsible for for essentially recaving. Once, once this went in. And so that added a lot of cost to the project. And so I quickly filed for, you know, I think it was $1.6 million, the grant for housing works for this round. And so anyway, long story short, we ended up that that ended up not being a problem. DOT matched our plans and then it wasn't an issue again. But then a month later, through Ty and Bond, who's our engineer consultant on this project, like a month later, through near completion of their design, hundred percent design, found out that, you know, because of, I think it was like ledge was really the biggest problem. And, and the, and the design of the pump station that was going to be required added and added again, that difference by 1.1 to 1.6 million dollar cost differential. And again, the cost escalation just generally from the town was approved for really back in 22 to do the design of the sewer and water for $275,000 to do this design under the same grant program. Following year, that's when I submitted for the $3.6 million for the construction. That was funded based on the 2002 and 2023 cost projection of the sewer. I mean, the, you know, inflation and everything else leads us to this moment. Whereas well, now we're still possibly a million dollars short of what we need to get it into the ground to go out to bid. The problem is what we're dealing with, what we're reckoning with is the town can't go out to bid for something that we don't have money for, right? So we can't, it seems obvious, but like, yeah. So it muddies the waters both legally and, you know, logistically, right? Even if we were to go up to, if we have an opinion of probable cost of $5 million, but we only have 3.6, even if we're like, no, you know, I think we're going to get a bid of 3.6. You put a lot of eggs in that basket, right? And, and so we don't want to go out to bid, not get what we need and say, oh, we need now we need to identify the gap in funding and go out to bid again because we're not going to get the same bids. It's a, it's this delicate dance that I was unaware of.
Our developers won't come up with anymore.
They came up with a little more, but it was not, it's not.
They still made something with a million bucks.
Yeah, so, so.
I'll be about to get home and reach your plan.
All this to say, it's, you know, that's, that's everything that sort of transpired. But we just met with the state last week it was to discuss this problem. You know, they're aware of it and they obviously want to help us out. They don't want to leave, so they want to see this project get completed because they gave us $3.6 million that we're currently not using.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens. They did let me know that because of the MBTA zoning district being proposed, where it's being proposed, that actually opens us up to other grant opportunities to the tune of a million and over. So by, by the, by way of proposing this MBTA zoning district where this board has proposed it, that is of great benefit potentially to even this project. So that again, the taxpayers aren't, the local taxpayers aren't, you know, hopefully don't ever have to pitch in. But we'll, I'm crossing that off the list as of yet.
Hello. And updating the. Is there a motion to approve the minutes asked?
I just have a couple of comments. One is I appreciate our minutes taker for reflecting my deep sigh before I gave my vote.
Those can not be looked at my.
It's a deep sigh in parentheses. Wonderful. There are a couple typos. Do they matter? I've written down boards. It's a lot of typos.
Yeah, yeah, no, but that's fine. I mean, you can always approve them with those changes that you note here. And I mean, typos are typos if it's not substantive.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I had two. I'll give you the copy. I just had a couple. Spelling. You know, it's, you know, A new was connected, Stantec has capital H, I mean crap like that. So I'll just give you that before I leave.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Stantec is also spelled S T A N C E C. S A N T C.
A T C. I'm not so, but. Okay.
You, I did appreciate the sighs.
I have a very.
So this is motion to approve the minutes. Subject to get.
Yeah.
On a little bit, any discussion?
Thanks.
Are there any form A?
No.
Eighty-one P.
There are none.
All right, public hearing, 169 South Street, definitive subdivision. This is a continuation of the public hearing. So let's postpone our list.
Suspend.
Suspend our regularly scheduled public meeting and open the public hearing. And we did get, we have Sean's here. We did get both of the engineers report and your response to that. Is there anything you want to, before we go on, is there anything you want to add to it or?
Um, really, I think two, two things came out of that of substance over the last three or four weeks since we last met. I think we've addressed all of, all of the peer review comments from Joe. I know he hasn't had a chance to fully go through. It was, it was a big package. So I'll reserve any more commentary on that for, for him to get through and commented on. But in the meantime, we were able to meet with the fire department to discuss the roadway width. And happy to report that we're able to come to an agreement with the fire department to keep the roadway width at 22 feet. So we didn't, didn't have to change the plans. We don't have any more impervious area. We don't have any more impacts. And then, as I outlined in my letter, the applicant has agreed to, one, provide sprinklers, individual sprinkler systems for all the proposed houses, as well as fund dry hydrant that the, the town fire department will kind of spearhead at the Taft Pond. The only other thing I, I think is probably worth mentioning, we talked a little bit about sightlines. That was one of the things that Joe had mentioned. And I went out there a couple of weeks ago. And standing at the driveway, looking out towards South Street. If you look to your left, that'd be looking northward. Sightlines are great there. I think no issues. Looking to the right, looking to the south, there are, what, four pines and, or four oak trees and a pine tree, as well as a little mound of soil that's on our property that I think should be removed. And I'm proposing to remove those to improve those sightlines. And, and with that, we would have, per the ASHTO standards, sightline sufficient for at least 30 miles an hour roadway. Other than that, I think we're probably just standing by for DGT's response comments or any additional comments they may have and anything else from the board.
Okay, thank you. As we discussed last, last time, Mike, one, well, my only concern at the time, biggest concern is the road width was changed from the preliminary. You gave us a road width in the preliminary, then when you came in with the definitive, it had changed. And it, it changed because of a meeting with conservation?
Yes, and, and, and that was a discussion at our final preliminary hearing. We never memorialized that in a plan, but we did discuss the potential of, of a reduced road width. And I think at that hearing, or yeah, the final preliminary hearing, I think we got the feedback in general from the, the board that they'd be okay with a 22 foot roadway, provided the fire department was, was okay with everything.
I, I don't remember that coming up, but I can answer the question. Was the right of way width changed at all? Did the conservation with that meeting, what about the road grade? Was that changed?
Nope.
The subgrade, the finish coat, the binder, was any of that changed?
Nope.
Those are all regulations in the planning board's subdivision control standards, right? Why did you take one of those standards and not, and change it for reasons that the planning board uses that for safety for vehicle and pedestrian access? That's not for a, it's not in the conservation rules and regulations on road. They don't have that. That's a planning board issue. So I guess my question is, how we, how is this reducing the, to 22 feet done, jive with our regulations on safety and vehicular access? There's no, you couldn't put a bike path in that at all after that. So there's no way to put a bike path in that. So I guess maybe it's, maybe it's not, you, maybe I, I might have missed something in that last meeting, but I certainly was not prepared for that kind of reduction in road width without, without some kind of justification that it meets our safety and our vehicular access regulations.
Well, just to interject, Tom, I think one of the things we asked was that he reached out to the fire department to make sure they were satisfied with that because you did raise that concern at the last meeting.
What did the fire department say the last meeting? 26 feet?
No, I think he just said that they were comfortable with the 22 feet.
When we last left that meeting, the, the fire department had requested 26 feet. The next time you came in, the conservation had requested 22 and the, and the fire department had agreed to it. Those are planning board regulations.
But if the.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I.
Let, let Kathy speak first. Thanks.
And the fire department said that's okay.
When? In between our meetings?
We asked you to check on it. Okay, I'm sorry, Sean.
No, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out, I believe the fire department is actually on this meeting here. And maybe, maybe they could speak to their concerns directly.
That Mr. Lizar that I see up there?
Yes.
Hi, Dan.
Good sir.
Hi, Dan.
How you doing?
All right. Any thoughts, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, we've met with, we've met with the development team. And with the sprinklers in the house, we do not need that larger, with each individual homes, probably the residential sprinklers. And then having the dry hydrant up at Taft Pond, we don't have the tanker apparatus concern that we would typically have for, for a subdivision like this. So we're okay with that road with reduction.
Does sprinklers require electricity?
Nope.
And if there's a leak in the pipe, is a pipe damage or something happens in the, the water line too and gets damaged, will they be able to put out the, the fire?
I mean, from a standpoint of performance, they have an excellent, excellent performance record in terms of what's available. I mean, yeah, they, could this system get impaired? Sure. The likelihood of that is probably.
I'm a strong believer in sprinkling the homes. My problem was if you had to get a fire truck down there because there's an accident or something on a 22 foot wide road, we're just asking for trouble on that narrow. And again, there's no way to expand it. There's no way to put in a bike path. It's just, it's a narrow road and it's outside of our subdivision control regulations. And if we're going to waive it, we're waiving it for the best interest of the town. And what we're saying is from now on, we can just make it 22 feet because it's better. That's why, why is it better?
It's better, it's better because of the, the fact that you're providing a different level of fire and life safety for the homeowners and the residents. For us, that sprinkled home is likely to be a very, either an extinguished or a very less severe fire. So again, Tom, to your point, the questions being asked, and this is a good discussion and debate. You know, we, we wouldn't have that same need. The other thing that we looked at with that reduction too is just the sheer size of this subdivision. But yeah, to your point, no, we wouldn't just have the reduction without it because the sprinklers are not required by code. But this is, this is a good, this is a good offset and what, what it does for us, we don't, we aren't as dependent on, on the larger road width to accommodate pretty much the tanker, the tanker shuttle that would occur.
I have a question for anybody that knows the answer. How does reducing the road width take care of something that the other types of protection like swales, rip rap, detention ponds, how does narrowing the road width do something that other types of environmental protection don't?
I mean, I just know from our perspective that we look at it trying to be comprehensive, not just for fire and life safety. We know that, that trade off also actually just removes impervious surface from, from, you know, sewer water runoff, basically. So it's, it's a very common, it's a very common trade off for, for providing the sprinklers aren't required by, by the residential building code. So again, it goes down to because the fire department apparatus demands aren't as, aren't as aggressive or, or as an unsprinkled set of subdivision or homes.
So you'd accept the 22 feet because it's, you can, you can get in there, not because it's preferred, because it's minimal? It's the minimum except?
Yeah, for, for our perspective, we're, we're, we're okay with that just because of looking at how we would looked at that particular, the subdivision, this subdivision being proposed and the size of, of the roadway and the number of houses and the sprinklers and the fact that we have the hydrant down the, down the way. The hydrant down the way, the way it's going to be set up there is we'll, we'd be able to, you know, avoid, like you said, having to set up the dump tank and, and shuttle function that normally be on that roadway if we didn't have sprinklers in the home.
Yes, sprinklers aside, I, I guess I, I don't have the luxury of saying it's only a three house subdivision. So those people can ride on a narrow, unsafe roadway. If, if the roadway is, is not safe for vehicular and pedestrian traffic at that width because of the speed and 30, you know, it may have to be posted at 30. One of the things you may have to do is you, you'll have to control the speed if it's a narrower road. That would make sense to me. So there may have to be.
From a fire department standpoint, we don't want to wander into the ASHTO standards and, you know, the roadway design standards, whatever the posted speed limit would be, would, should be for, to your point, Tom.
You have.
Appropriately that.
But you have the largest trucks and vehicles going in down those roads. So they have, that's why we always ask you, can you get your vehicles in there? Is this, are these turnarounds big enough? You know, so we all were asking you. And that's why, because you have the biggest, biggest vehicles.
Right. And that makes sense. Yeah, it makes sense. So like you said, we looked at this roadway, this subdivision and the sprinklers. And we're okay with that reduce with in that location. Like you said, we talked, we had exchanged emails regarding this. So I think, you know, from our perspective, we believe it's, it's, it's safe and it's satisfactory.
And a brush, if there's a brush fire behind the houses, you'd have to go down the road?
Uh, yeah, that wouldn't change anything with how we do that. I mean, we basically, the, the one road that, that is a little more important from our perspective is getting down to the proposed solar road, the solar field and energy storage, you know, which is a separate project permit. But that's the only one that, that is important for us to get into because that is one of the, one of the two ways that we get in and out of the, the protected Corps of Engineers land that's, that's behind South Street and the subdivisions.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Sean, anything else you'd like to add or anybody else on the phone?
Nope, that, that's all we have for right now, I think. Rick, anything on your end?
No, no, Dan, thank you for, you know, that input there. No, I have nothing, nothing here. We're just, see what Joe comes back with.
Yeah.
So it's a question.
So the, the trees that you're proposing get cut down for recycling purposes. Are they all on your property?
Yes, they, they are.
And just a question. So we are looking to take a vote on this?
But it sounded like the applicant was looking forward to getting.
I thought that, yeah.
The, I guess, final review on comments. So if that's the case, I would ask, because our next meeting, excuse me, the board's next meeting is not until November 22nd. And that is just because town meeting actually happens to end up on, you know, a date and time that this board would typically meet, November 12th. So if that's the case, we would just need an extension for the constructive grant deadline of the subdivision to be just a little bit beyond November 22nd so to give this board time to vote and for the decision document to be generated. But how, I mean, to, through you, Mr. Chair, how's, how's the board feel about it currently? I mean, I did speak with Joe Sano of DGT today, and although he hasn't had the luxury of giving it the response, a complete review, he read through the comments. And, you know, he, he made it sound as if most of the items had been addressed. The only one thing that he really highlighted to me that he still had a question on, and maybe the applicant could comment on it tonight, is the standard number 10 under illicit discharge. You know, there was a question as to how the hydraulic analysis was.
Using the weapons, if they could use the weapons for inside.
Correct.
Why not?
It sounds like there's a difference in, in approach and how to generate those, those calculations, so.
I would be comfortable moving forward with it.
There is one problem. I'm okay with everything except the road width. I'm still in shock on that one. And I don't want to overreact. Mike, whenever I'm in shock, I have a tendency to overreact. So right now, I'd be, you know, vote, there's only three and you would lose, it would be denied.
It's the majority.
It's a simple majority.
You know, three votes to approve a subdivision. It's the majority of the elected board, not the majority of the people at the meeting. I've been through this for 45 years.
So you show off.
So.
So we won't, so we'll just continue.
So that would be if you, I would ask you to postpone it till the other two members are here.
Rick, are you in agreement with that? Give them the extension?
Yes, I am.
It's a good subdivision and I, I think it should be built, but I'm not gonna, I won't say anything more than that. But hopefully the other members will, will be here next meeting.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Also, that was, that was a request for the grant, the constructive grant deadline to. Can we, um, can I put it to the 23rd, just a day after the meeting right now? And then at the 22nd, we'll, we'll talk about.
Michael, I'm looking at my calendar. The 23rd is a Saturday. We're talking about the 26th, aren't we?
Excuse me. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm thinking today, obviously. Second, yeah, the 26th, excuse me, yeah. If you get granted to the 27th, just that gives us an extra, you know, if something were to happen. And then on the 26th, we can talk about extending it by like a week or something, just to get the actual physical decision signed. And or if this board wants to wait to meet on it again to vote on the, you know, however you want to.
I feel the only thing that seems to be is the engineering differences of opinion. And we can decide that it's just, it's just a difference of opinion that, that both are correct. You can, and you can use that land. There's nothing that says you can't.
Yeah.
There may be an opinion that you can, but there's an opinion that you can't. So we can smooth those over and the sightlines and all those things seem to be addressed. So I don't know what we need to do other than wait for the other members to get here and hear the story.
Close the public hearing.
Yes, I will close the public, I'm going to, actually, I'm going to close the public hearing. There's, there's, there's really not much more to discuss. I believe we can vote on that next meeting and not have much discussion. So I'm, move to be closed, the public hearing. And then he, is there a, I'll second that. Any discussion? Any, all favor of closing the public hearing? Hi.
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 So did you still want a final review from DGT?
We always need a final review because even the vote is going to be subject to the final approval of the town and the reviewing engineers, so. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So just to clarify, we're continued to November 26th, that TBD or do we have a time?
Seven, 7:10 is good. Now, we, we have closed the public hearing and it's not continued. You would be coming in for the board's vote.
Understood, understood. Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is subdivision, Dean Con, Caitlin Farm Road, request for one reduction.
Oh, Dave, I'm here from Lobster Corp.
Hey, John.
Nice to meet you all.
Younger than the last time I saw you. What are you doing?
Thank you. I'm shaking, probably.
In your packet, you do have, although it's, I'm realizing it's in very small print. Engineer's opinion of probable cost provided by here, engineer, who, and I talked to him shortly before the meeting. So you'll see there, there's a recommendation to maintain $23,137. That is of total $197,719 that was originally placed on a bond. Yeah, that's the amount that's currently in the, in the bond is about $197,000. So that $23,000 provides for the 10% that is required to be maintained. Plus, there was like a $3,000.
You get that back at the, when the town approves it at a public, at a town meeting?
Uh, yes.
The vote is accepted or a year after completion?
Well, when the road is accepted as found. Yes, we'll plan on trying, trying to be at the spring town meeting.
The 10%, 10%.
That's what's held for the, the terms are, whatever comes first is a year after completion, which is one was a complete, and if the town accepts it at a town meeting.
I was, I was making sure that we're talking about the $23,000, not the $197,000.
No, we're going to, tonight we will vote to reduce the bond and.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to reduce the bond to, from $197,719 to $23,137?
$197.
The $23,137 is what we'll be keeping, the total will be kept.
We'll definitely reduce the $23,137.
I'll second that.
Carry on, sorry for the details.
Second that for discussion. Any just. All my favorites.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy afternoon. What's the quickest meeting you've been here?
Oh, I know. Yeah. I was like, have him do an easy one. He's like, yes.
No, yeah, don't get used to it.
There you go.
No, no, it's my.
No, no, it's mine.
Uh, okay, next is this lovely drawing.
Mike, would you like? Yeah, um, and I have uh the the property owners here to discuss this. This was um, uh, just a request to be placed on. The agenda for just a preliminary discussion, you know, it's very likely that what is proposed here will be going through the zoning board. Um, for approval, a special term approval, um, but it also probably through this board for uh a site plan as well, but.
That's the ten parking space, ten parking spots would trigger the site plan.
Um, so most likely that's the case.
Then over two thousand square feet would fit.
Yeah.
How many units are these?
What you have in front of you shows five. Um, so I'm here to ask your suggestions and. And if the town has any requests, I'll.
What is your name again?
My name is Matt Connell.
Do you spell it please?
C O double N E double L. This this property I've owned since two thousand, it's uh the back lot to an apartment building, a three centennial court. On the back lot is a dilapidated barn. Uh, historic system commission has looked at it, um, about ten years ago. Um. So uh, for as long as I'm managing the apartment building, I have been wondering, what can I do to improve the. Or the property owners, the cash flow on the on the property, but also for the neighbors, the the overall field thing, because it's a bit shabby. Um, this plan I like, because uh a lot of the applicants I get for apartments are individuals with either. Hobby or business that requires a lot of storage, so the first floor of this building is all garages. The second floor is all studio apartments. So, um, the uh. The ideal tenant I have in mind is uh a someone like myself when I moved up then, a um, an individual with. Entrepreneurial spirit or hobby, something that requires a lot of storage space. Uh, maybe it's a contractor, or maybe it's an artist, uh, they're happy with um, small um digs in the cells, but they need a place to. To do their thing. Um, and um, for me, it's offering a lot of utility. Because I think the building is flexible for other purposes down the road, I intend on keeping it for the long run. I think it will also be a a key stone to what will eventually be a redevelopment of three centennial court. The the apartment building that that this is adjacent to is, um, you know, two hundred years old, and it's. Someday it's gonna run out and need. Uh, redeveloping, so I think that this. Is, um, you could you could call it putting the cart for the horse, um, I'm building an accessory building now. And I I think it will serve a future building later. Um. I have an architect and lawyer, they're both up to residence, they were both invited to come tonight, but we thought the meetings would be a little longer. So uh, so they were aiming for eight, but I I'll wing it, um, the, um. The lawyer uh, uh, tells me that uh. Key to your planning is the right of way. So there's a road that connects Russell to Centennial, it's entirely on my property, and. The neighbors, the town has a right of way over it, we have to move it in order to get the front that's necessary to build this. Uh, we're not gonna diminish it, we're not gonna uh encroach on anything, we're just gonna shift it north a little.
So is it a private way or is it a?
I think it's a public right of way over my property. And my my lawyer can answer that better.
One of the things I think we care, one of the things we just uh did about the goal was, the town had a. A right of way uh on, close to this area where it was like a. Off-road, parked probably for horses. When people go on their work, they park their horses there, but it's a two-hundred-year. Taking for the town, and we just voted to have that returned to the homeowner, because it's their lawn now, it's not, that's what that lawn is. So on something like this, uh, this is an opportunity for you to improve that area.
Very much so.
Not just uh there, but but then that, then the town should work with you on. If this is the right way now, where where's the best place for it, considering the new development, and we're doing it considering the new develop. Maybe we don't want to fix it yet, but after the, you go there and. Tell them what you're going to do, um, they could say, well, we can just move it around there, and there's our. Twenty-two-foot wide roadway goes around it, um.
So you would move it, you you said you would move it, because people still need to get from point A to point B.
Correct.
And so when you moved it, you'd be moving. Again, this is a private, this is a right of way over public. Road, so you'd be.
It's actually a right of way over, a public right of way over public, private property.
Okay, that's that's what I thought, then I thought when I asked the question, I.
I think, okay.
Yeah, that's how I.
So you're just asking to move the private right of way.
Correct.
And, okay, okay.
Um.
But where to and how to?
Well, our engineer will map out that precisely. Um, my hope for tonight was just to put it in front of you to see if there's any initial reactions, maybe you wanna, um. May maybe you want to tell me the town needs pickleball courts, or maybe, uh, I'll 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 shift gears where the early.
They play pickleball courts.
No, no, no.
Please don't.
Because they change it, we have to the public here, they need to yell at us.
We just had the time of eight. Off the.
Yeah.
Senior.
Oh, okay, well, I I I just was grabbing at, uh, uh.
Oh, I love them, yeah, I agree.
I was just, we were getting, well, the point is, I I I I'm I'm open to suggestions, um, I wanna, um. Uh, I've invested this as is my family, but, um. Um, but we want to do what's right for the neighbors, and um, I haven't approached my direct neighbors yet, this is, I think, gonna benefit. The whole neighborhood. Uh, one person will have a profound impact, um. And um, we'll we'll go and discuss it with them and and seek their um approval, um. But, um, this, what you have in front of you is the first drawing I've made on something I've been. Churning over in my head for for a decade or more.
Nothing can be done unless it's first advantage.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the zoning in that area, because didn't we just deal with?
Business, isn't it?
It's what?
I think it's general business, I think you're, or commercials, either one of the two.
It's, I believe it's general business.
But what? Without the doctor. That wanted to put an apartment in a building that you wanted to use as sort of a office.
That's a residence to to, um, that it's currently a residence. And uh, it's a general business zone with a non-conforming zone existing, this would be a ZB variance to make it.
Okay, but it still need the variance, having to go with the variance.
It's a variance for the that, and it would need the site plan in front.
But having the mixed use, I mean, I'm not objecting, I love mixed use, uh, but that would be a challenge.
Because it doesn't go down the front, right, because our mixed use thing doesn't go down.
Something, right, but but he could do both if he would, right, and she couldn't, because it was already used as housing.
Being used right now as a as a residence, so.
Okay.
You can you can continue to use it as a residence, because that's your variance.
Or you can go to a business.
You can go back to business, you can't do both, it says, it says either in lines. Does that make sense, uh, that you would, you would then, so you're you're planning to talk to the neighbors, make sure that they know what's going on?
I I want to come to you first, but we will, um, you know.
Well, when they come, when we have a public hearing, we don't want them to hear it from us.
They won't be surprised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and the next would be, of course, the the DPW. For that, um, I'm not so sure about, uh. Zoning board might probably help you with what would be required to ask for a variance.
Yeah.
And what what that variance would be, it would be probably a use variance.
A special permit.
Special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he could take the process there, and then eventually, if it was approved, they'd come back to us, okay, uh, the park. Which is gonna be the same thing, does DPW, police and fire, everybody in and out safely, so it's gonna be, site plan is just at the end.
The basics are replacing the existing.
Yeah, what's there is a five-stall barn.
Yeah, which is probably subject to the demolition to let me.
I've been through this once, and um, I I will certainly. Respect the historic commission if they uh, if they. Do another delay, but I was delayed already.
Okay. And you're all right?
Yeah.
That would make three, there's really three processes, you're gonna have the zoning board, you're gonna have the planning board, and then you gotta go up the building. And then the building committee, he's gonna ask a lot of questions that we don't ask yet.
Okay.
So as long as you know what's ahead, yeah, those are the three main steps that are ahead of you.
Well, by your standards, this may be small, but for me, it's big, so uh, thanks for looking at it.
Can I just, I just have a couple of questions.
Oh, shoot.
Just, I mean, I'm gonna probably drive by tomorrow, but. Where is, so there's a five-stall barn here that you said is pre-dilapidated, so it seems almost like a public scene, do you think, anyway? Uh, but the question, so where is the apartment? You said they are right behind, and I know that Centennial over, those trees.
As the picture is drawn, it it would be over here.
Okay.
Diagnosing, um, this way, and the the restaurant, is it called Rebecca's? Rebecca's is here. Uh, my ten unit is here, and very close. Um, actually, I can show you better on this.
Oh, okay.
Um, so. This lot. Is diagonally adjacent to the other lot I own, where the ten unit is.
Okay.
Centennial Court stops right about here.
Yeah.
And then the right of way, um, looks like an alley separating my building from um, Mr. Pandolino's four family.
Where's the wall, where's the stone wall?
The Jersey barrier is here.
And where's the restaurant?
The Jersey barrier separates the residential from the restaurant.
Okay.
Um, so, um.
I think it's an opportunity to really improve the area.
It's it's in, thank you, it's in need of it, yeah. But from what I understand, there's a fire plug here, and that is sort of the end of Russell. Um, to to any person that drives through, it looks like Russell extends right across visually, but technically stops at the plug. Centennial Court stops at the corner. This house is gonna need some discussion. Uh, there's two family there.
Big with the big porch on it, that's all of the.
Isn't that the former school? It doesn't make any.
Yeah, I don't know the history of the building, it's a few family there, great people, husband and wife, um, I know one percent of the story. Um, but the story is having to do with their access, as you can see, the driveway. Uh, they have what appears to be a right of way off off mine.
But there's problems, we take Rebecca's problems, the other side Rebecca's. A problem on the uh, that one as well.
Semantiquated mapping.
Yeah, it's it's a problem on, I think, on three sides of Rebecca's, there's a. Problems with the road layout.
Yeah.
And matching up the deeds with the actual what's in the ground.
Yeah, I I don't have the horsepower to fix all of it, but um, but I I imagine. Uh, I imagine we'll we'll get busy on that part there.
I don't.
Scott? Sorry, late, I ran upstairs.
It's all done, you've you successfully approved it.
Excellent. You might just stop.
I'm gonna encourage you to just proceed and, um. I mean, from the board, if you'd like to make comments.
No, I think it's.
Mike, any comments?
No.
And you are?
I'm Scott Richardson, Scott Richardson, architect, so we're the architects for the project.
Hey, your partner is on the industry.
Yes, he does, that's Mike, yeah, yeah, I live on Grove Street.
Again, the German Shepherd.
Oh, okay.
That was Bri, Bri was on the plane.
Um, one thing that I want to correct, uh, somebody asked, what's its own, do you have a know, Scott?
It's CIA, I did look while we were talking, discussing.
So it's either, it's either commercial industry or, either one, you know, required or zoning board appeals. There is.
He knows we go before he officially came to us, correct? I mean, this is perfectly to do this come to us first.
Even if they came to us first, you spend a lot of money and we're subjected to the zoning board appeals, so. The cheaper, easier path. If you gotta go to both of them, go to the zoning board first, it's any trouble. You didn't spend a lot of time, if you come to us, you spend a lot of time and money, and then you go to the zoning board, and if they say you've got a problem with them. It's a big waste of time.
Well, we'll proceed then. Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish it was always like that.
You want our.
I just figured you had bigger agendas, it would take you a while to true.
It usually, it usually is. I always text people.
Yeah.
Like, I'll get before a meeting.
Yeah.
I'll say, text me when it's twenty minutes out.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's how I do it.
Okay.
So you might want to.
Sure, sure.
Meetings are short, because, Mike, we gotta get him on through them.
Oh, okay.
You still all alone?
Yeah, all, oh, and the house?
No, it's.
Oh, and they all.
They save in your office?
Yes. Oh, no, 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 well, I we I have Helena there now.
So is there been a replacement for Amy?
Yeah, Helena, that's what I'm talking about, um, so Helena's there now, um, she's awesome.
Where did she come from?
She.
She came from Lobos here, right?
No. She came from Rodenheiser, actually, she was, uh, um, she scheduled all the inspections for Rodenheiser.
Okay, she upped it, person?
No, uh, I think Uxbridge.
Both by.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you have one more person.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
You know, it's fresh.
No, I just put on, put a couple of just uh potential, like if.
I saw those?
Yeah, if you wanted to name anything that you want to discuss at a later agenda, agenda.
Yeah, I do have one question. Who the hell named Plum?
Historical commission.
And does it have a E in it?
No.
No, I didn't think so, but there's three signs, one has an E, the other doesn't.
Oh, if you look, if you go next to my house, it says Fowler Road. Martin Street, it says Fowler Street.
So it does?
Yeah, it says Fowler Road, next to me, and it's Fowler Street on the other end.
So did I follow, I follow street? So Fowler. I follow, why did I follow?
If you live on Fowler Street, unless you look at the sign at the end of my, it it says Fowler Road.
Okay.
But if you go down to your side, you know where it says mechanic and Fowler?
Yeah.
It says Fowler Street on one side of your house, the other side of your house says Fowler Road.
Wow, I'm famous.
But that was to your point, and it's cost too much money to change it, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did have one thing, um, but I don't think it it doesn't require much conversation, um, unless I was to you disagree. The, uh, I was gonna, I was gonna reach out to the RJ, because I I still have some money left from that grant, um, and for what they've done, and see if they can. Um, maybe generate, I mean, I I have some fact sheets and potential flyer and things like that for the MBTA zoning.
Yeah, I.
But I.
Yeah.
I think I'll commission them to do basically any remainder of uh the funds that I have available to put something together.
I mean, that was one of the things we asked for, the original contract, but again, I I would like to be able to work with them too, because I think if we give people too much information. You know, we have to address specifically.
Yes.
What people are concerned about.
Yeah.
They don't care about the history, they don't care about. You know, they just care, you know, what we're talking earlier, the portable access for us.
Before the.
You know, bullet points, dot, dot.
I think people are stupid because they didn't get enough information.
Now they make it.
I was wrong.
Yeah. Now they just make them up. I I've just, I I'm really pissed, because with, we're still.
Yeah, any other adjournments?
I made adjournments at seven, whatever it is, forty-nine or something.
Seven forty-nine.